Right, it is one o'clock. We will call our afternoon business meeting in the Clickcat County Board of Commissioners to order. For the record, all three commissioners are present. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
What's up to you two, our United States and America? My nation.
Thank you everyone. Entertain a motion on the business agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda noting that the nuisance board workshops good for 115 on eight twenty-three twenty-three has been canceled.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve the business agenda with the one note that the nuisance board has been canceled for nuisance workshop. Any further discussion on the business agenda? Hearing none, all this in favor of approval of the business agenda with the one change, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. There are no commissioner meeting minutes. And so this gets us to the time of the day where we have a citizen comment. Citizen comment will be limited to three minutes per person. With a one time, if you don't use all your time, that does not mean you get to come back later and pick up the remainder of your time. We do ask that all of your issues remain pertinent to county business or things that happen inside the county. State your name and general location for the record so that we can include them in our minutes. And then the commissioners leave a time at the end around one twenty-five to respond to comments. So if you do ask questions, don't feel too bad if you don't get a response. You need to hang out till one twenty-five when we respond to all of the comments. So we will go in the room first to give in the room a chance like we always do. Do you want to come in now or wait till later? Okay, she's commenting now.
Kathy Moko Goldendale wanted to talk about the Clickcat County Fair and it was a really good fair, I think. It started out a little warm on Wednesday and not quite as bad Thursday and then Friday, Saturday and Sunday. It was much better. I think I've been going to the fair for probably thirty years and I really realized this time how many, what, how many people it takes to put the fair on? And the number of families and people from our county that just spend hundreds of hours, you know, working on it in there. You've got the parents and you've got grandparents and the kids and everybody is just, you know, the first three days are county people. Last two days are rodeo, which is kind of two separate things. But yes, so many people work so hard to do that. I just do one little teeny part, but you know, I really realize putting on all the team, heading and roping all the county things that, and then the parents with their four age kids and oh, you know, anyway. So I think it was very successful. Good job.
Thank you. We'll go online. I see a hand up from Aaliyah Walker. Go ahead.
Hi, it's Aya Walker.
Okay, sorry.
I'm Hannah Rose Walker's mom and I'm calling you from Utah. I wanted to let you know that this is now the third week that I still have not received any communication from your sheriff or your prosecutor regarding the suspicious death investigation of my daughter. I have a question for you today. I wonder why Hannah's body wasn't sent for an autopsy for nine days? When Washington law says that they must be sent within five unless receiving a court order. I have not received any indication that that court order was received nor any explanation for the lengthy delay in autopsy following a suspicious water death. So I'm inquiring why Hannah's body wasn't sent for nine days? And I'm also inquiring why I still have not heard from any county officials in regard to the suspicious death investigation and multiple questions, valid questions that we've identified that we would like answers to. Thank you.
Thank you. Go back in the room. Does anyone else in the room have public comment for the Board of Commissioners today?
Question?
Sure, if you come up to the microphone so everybody online can hear.
Are you guys going over the, I was at the planning commission meeting last night. They, there was a lot of discussion about recommendations to hire legal consulting over the solar issue. Is that going to be discussed here today?
At this meeting, it's not on our agenda to discuss it, but if you would like to discuss it with your three minutes of time and give us your opinion, you're more than welcome.
I, I, I will since I'm here. Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea. I have noticed that the meetings that I've gone to, that seems to be a constant point brought up that there is lack of counseling. A lot of the, the planning commissioners have expressed that they don't know all the laws and would really like some outside consulting. And unfortunately, due to the way the laws are written up, you can't really get, my understanding is you can't get that unless the prosecuting attorney allows that to happen based on Washington state law or something. And the same thing, putting it out to vote to the public is there's laws that won't allow that also. But anyway, I would like to see that. I, I, I would like to see somehow if there's some way to do that. I, I would like to see it happen. I also feel that there's three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars of taxes collected from the Lund Hill project this year, the, the solar project according to the assessor's office records. And then again, I don't know how exactly government works on that, but I feel like that's a, that's funding that could be available to launch some sort of illegal defense against being railroaded by Olympia or the governor or FSEC or whatever. But anyway, I hope you can work that out.
I, I do have a question for you, sir, before you, the first, first question, did you give us a name and location for the?
No, Dennis Schroder Rimrock Ranch, your Rimrock Road in Goldendale.
I thought that was the name I remembered from before, but I wasn't positive.
That's all right.
Second question I have is we do not watch the planning commission meetings.
Right.
Because we're supposed to be unbiased, I guess, when they give their information to us. When they get done with their process and present their, whatever they're doing to us. We take the evidence then and, and make our determination. We don't get involved in the process. So for the most part, no county commissioner was listening to the planning commission meeting yesterday. Are you saying that they had discussions about counsel and needing more counsel or wishing they had counsel?
Yes, I am. Yeah, I am saying that. Nobody said that it was, that you weren't privy to that info, your information yet. Actually, I was told that it would be discussed at the meeting today. And there was discussion about being here to voice our opinion from the public side. So yes, it was, and like I say, I, I've listened to it both privately and at these meetings. I've heard that request brought up quite a bit.
That answers my question. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Some homework to do.
Thank you.
Sorry for everybody else online for answering his question right away or asking the question right away is he tends to leave right after he makes a comment. So I didn't figure it'd be around in twenty minutes when I got the time to ask the question. Anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Raise your hand or unmute yourself. Cherry, go ahead.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So I really don't know even where to start. I guess maybe I'm very frustrated today. You know, as free speech continues to be shut down, we're allowed three minutes because you love to hear from us so much. And the more, you know, I never knew anything about government. I was just a good citizen paying my taxes, doing what I'm supposed to do. And then I got involved with looking at under canvas and wondering how you're going to put a small city up on that road above the white, above a national scenic protected river. And I saw, I pulled back the curtains and I saw how this happens. It happens with special favors. I watched agency after agency be bought out in front of my eyes. It's very disheartening to watch how government continues to do special favors and come after the people for our money. Next year, when the levy rates for the levy lid is lifted to three percent because legislative had told you, you can do it. And people might lose their property. You'll come after sales taxes. You'll come after states. The state will come after whatever taxes they can get from us. You'll come after whatever taxes you can get from us. And then you'll do special favors and then you'll do special favors for commissioners who have illegal Airbnbs, illegal wedding venues. You know, there's a wedding venue up there on Anderson Road. It's not permitted. The road doesn't, doesn't allow for that type of commercial traffic, but special favors. And how do we know about the illegal Airbnb? Because there was an alcohol party for sixty to seventy minors. Minors were served alcohol and according to reports, Commissioner Anderson was there. It's his Airbnb. He showed up. He was there the next morning rinsing puke, vomit from teenagers off the deck when the police showed up looking for a missing girl. There's a report from the girl. This is all known, but we have cover up after cover up after special favors. And all it does is hurt people. And I thought that maybe government was for the people. You're not for the people. You let us talk our three minutes. We talk and we talk and then you do what you're gonna do. You do the special favors and people get hurt. There will be death on Oak Ridge Road. There will be death at that intersection on Highway one forty-one and Oak Ridge Road and Houston Street. There's already accidents there. This hurts people and I, I don't know where to go with this because all I see is government taking more and more of our money, electricity, any way you can get it from us, raising your wages, your benefits, your retirements, covering up for crimes, covering up for immoral behaviors. And here we are. And it's just very sad. I don't know where to go with this, but it's just very sad. Thank you.
Lot to unpack there and I will be happy to unpack that when it's our time. We'll go back online. Does anybody else have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? If you do, unmute yourself or raise your hand. I'm seeing none. If you have comment for the Board of Commissioners today, now is your time to unmute yourself or raise your hand. I'm seeing none. So we will go about signing papers. And if you have citizen comments for the Board of Commissioners, please unmute yourself, raise your hand or in otherwise get our attention. Question for Lisa. Travel reimbursement in here that's signing off. It's just authorization, right? It's not to actually reimburse for expenses. Right. Hmm? Yeah. Yeah, up in Anna Worth.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, somebody in the room. We're in citizen comments, sir. If you have a citizen comment for us and you'd like to come forward and give your name and location. On the record, we are still on and you have three minutes and you have a clock ready there.
Ron Concelli, Goldendale. I got a real easy question. I just looked at the budget down there to seven hundred and some pages. Have you got an abbreviated version of that?
I wish.
And we don't have a thirty, forty page.
Are you talking about this current year's budget that we are currently working on or last year's budget?
He was out in twenty-four.
That's what we are currently working on and know it's this.
Yeah, so there isn't any kind of small version.
Not until it's, we'll have a budget summary when it's approved. But we don't have a budget seventy until we come up with an approved budget.
That will be probably December sometime.
Or, or in there, yeah, first part of the year because right now it's page by page, bars number by bars number, so that you can see how much money is being spent on professional services and communication and training and all those.
I probably died before I could get to it.
It's very fun and exciting, sir.
It used to get, get a small version of it, but that just don't do it anymore now.
Well, I, I wouldn't know what a small version would be other than if a department just said, this is what we're expecting in revenue and this is what we're expecting in expenses without telling you how it's being spent.
Yeah.
Because all those lines are how it's being spent.
A question, another, one more question on it. Just have you met with all the departments and through that process? No, you're not even through that.
Nope, not, not even started. We, well, we are started. We did one budget workshop last week. We'll have another budget workshop Thursday morning. It will be a weekly process. We did have to remove public works from Thursday's portion. So we'll get to them at a future date, which will be public works and the capital list and the non-capital improvement list and buildings and grounds and all that stuff, but we will meet with them over the course of the next month and a half or two.
Are those all open for public?
Yep. Yep, we don't allow public comment at Thursday, but yep, you can send them just like I did as a citizen for many years. And they're quite entertaining.
I don't have wood stove anymore, so I don't need all the paperwork because seven hundred pages. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'll just listen to what come out of your program.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, goodbye.
Still in citizen comment. If anybody's got citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners, either in the room or online. Raise your hand, get our attention somehow. I'm pretty close to last call for citizen comment. If you've got comment out there, now is your time to raise your hand or unmute yourself. Last call for citizen comment. If you have citizen comment, now is your last time to make it today. So unmute yourself or raise your hand if you do, if you have citizen comment. I'm seeing none. So with that, we will close citizen comment for today. Normally I wait and respond last, but in this case I think I will go first. Mrs. Walker, again, I, I'm sorry for the position that you're in. And I don't know why there has been no response in three weeks. I do not know why the body wasn't sent for nine days and I don't know why you haven't heard from officials. Those are, those are not questions that I can get to the bottom of. Those are different elected officials and as we're advised that you have legal counsel. Those questions would more than likely need to be asked through your legal counsel to our legal counsel. They're not Board of Commissioner questions. So while I, I feel bad for the predicament that you're in. I once again have nothing that I can offer you for help or assistance on the matter, other than my hope that that you can get the answers that you're looking for. Cherry, I understand your passion on the issues and you're, you're very passionate. But with that, I do have to say that I do take offense to your blanket comments today. And, and first I'll start with, we will raise your taxes three percent. It's my understanding that that bill did not make it through the legislature this year. So you might want to go take a second look at that. But your blanket statements that we will do special favors, I have not done a special favor for anybody. So I, I take offense to that. Your statement that we're not for the people. Every vote I make, every debate I'm in is arguing on the half of the people. So you might have these issues with individuals, but your issues aren't with me. If these are your issues and that I'm covering up crimes. I am not covering up any crimes, nor would I ever cover up a crime. So you're, you're kind of making some character assassinations there that for the record, I would like to correct that those are not me. And I would hope in the future you would be a little more precise of where you're aiming your targets. Ron on the budget, yes, our budget is huge. And it takes a lot of work, but if we had a concise version, you wouldn't be able to see what we're spending money on. So the reason we give you a three and a half inch thick binder is so you can see where every dollar is spent. And if you sat through the budget meetings, you would be seeing me going line by line, bars number by bars number, trying to remove any pork or fluff from every line of that budget. With that, I will yield my time to the rest of the board. Who wants to go next?
Thank you. So Kathy, I agree. The fair was awesome. I, it was so busy. It was packed. I was there on Saturday and I was really happy for all the work they did that they had such a great turnout. It was awesome. I hope it continues to grow. And then Aya, I have to echo Commissioner Christopher's comments. Our heart is out for you, but because of the way the system is structured and legal, basically our hands are tied. Even if I did ask questions, I probably, because it is in the legal realm, wouldn't be allowed to have those answers. If I could, I would. And Cherry, if you remember the campaign trail, one of the things that happened during my campaign, there were two major issues that came up every single time. Solar is always our biggest debate. You hear it all the time. Everybody's opinion on solar, but I have to tell you in looking back in my records and looking, thinking back at the meetings, the number one issue in my campaign was, what are you going to do for the county? What are you going to do for the people of the county? How are you going to help get the board organized and get the departments organized? And I work on it weekly. It's at the top of my food chain. We can't do anything else unless we're a coordinated board that works well with our departments. And so that's probably my number one priority working here. And I, I keep trying hard. We make eking progress is what I'd like to say. It's, it is the government iceberg movement. But that's okay. And Mr. Schroder, thank you for coming in and sharing about planning commission. It's good to hear from the public about that process. And Dell, I appreciate the budget books that our finance gal has created. And if you get one of those books and look at it, you can get to a major overall budget area. And there is a graph in there that I like and it's almost like a colored pie chart. And it does show you a breakdown of where major monies are, but it doesn't go into the finite. And I appreciate those kind of graphs. I work well with those. major monies are, but it doesn't go into the finite. And I appreciate those kind of graphs. I work well with those. But thank you.
Mike. Kathy, thank you for your positive comments as always. Um, and Ms. Walker, my heart goes out to you. I'm so sorry for everything you've been through. Um, and my seatmates have said it pretty succinctly that there's nothing that we as county commissioners can do. Ms. Bosque, uh, you, you are frustrated. Um, you have directed a lot of that frustration towards this board and towards me personally. Um, for your, uh, what you believe is under canvas. I would like to remind you that this board did not vote on the conditional use permit application for under canvas. Um, this board, um, and both Commissioner Christopher and I did not vote on the Lund Hill Solar, uh, project, and we have not voted on, um, any of these things that you have been so adamant and vociferously against. Um, I will remind you that, um, private property rights exist. Um, and that, um, people have the right to do with on their property what the code allows. And when someone like under canvas goes through that conditional use permit process, um, they have rights. Um, and we, as this board, did not make any of those decisions. There were no special favors from this board. Uh, no agencies were bought out. Um, I don't know how you would buy out the Department of Ecology or the Department of Fish and Wildlife. But I'm guessing it would be a pretty big penny if you tried. And in terms with, uh, sales tax in this county, uh, the county commissioners and in this county has the lowest or close to the lowest sales tax in Washington state. Uh, for the county portion of those taxes, uh, the mass majority of the taxes that you pay go to the junior taxing districts in which you vote on and the people vote on. And they can lay, raise those levy lids and bring in the dollars so that you can have adequate fire, water, medical protection. And by having this board over the last many decades fiscal conserva- uh, being fiscally conservative, we have not raised those taxes so that the junior taxing districts have the ability to raise funds so that they can provide the necessary services that you require on a daily basis. That is not doing special favors. And with that, um, Mr. Kinsella, I know you're not here, but hopefully someone will tell you. Um, you can go on our county website under the commissioners and under the finance section. And you can look at many of those really great graphs that, um, our finance person puts together. Um, that really can break down the budget, the current budget into manageable pieces so that you can see where the, the general dollars are going and to, and, and so that's about our current budget. When you look at our future budget, most of our future budget is going to be, um, just paying people the colas that they're entitled to. And everything else is pretty much staying the same or getting cut a little bit. Uh, we still have much more to do on that budget. Um, so it wouldn't make sense to put out a, a general overview prior to getting that done with that, sir. I'll yield back.
Okay. With that, our public comment period is over. I'd like to thank everybody who attended and or made comments. Um, hopefully the answers to your questions came, whether they were the answers you were looking for or not, I don't know. But they were the answers we tried to give you. Um, with that, we will move on. At one thirty is, uh, time for miscellaneous reports. We have Nate Ulrich. Is that correct pronunciation? Perfect. Uh, with Columbia Rent Land Trust to discuss forest legacy conservation easement support letter. Is this, this one that we?
Yes.
Well, I don't know. This is what we were given last week. Do you have a copy?
Okay, I'm good. Yeah.
I know. The two and the three. And actually, I real- this is one we sent last week. It's been updated since then, so we'll send you an, an updated version. These things change. Uh, almost constantly before the application goes in. Uh, but real quick, my name's Nathan Ulrich. I work for Columbia Land Trust. Out of our White Salmon office and I'm here with two others. I'll let them introduce themselves.
John Cole worked for Green Diamond, uh, represent Twin Creeks Timber, uh, one of the purchasers of a majority of the SDS lumber landowners.
Hi, uh, Sherry Carney, Columbia Land Trust.
And we're here to, uh, re-request a letter of support, uh, that the commission provided last year. Uh, on a project that will purchase development rights on a portion of Twin Creeks Timbers, uh, ownership. And this ownership goes down the White Salmon. It's, it's the property in bright red on this map. Uh, goes down the White Salmon. It's in both Clickatat and Skamini Counties. Uh, you should have, uh, a copy of the letter that the commission provided last year. The reason we're asking for another letter of support is that last year the project was not funded. It's still possible that it could be funded under last year's, uh, funding cycle. But just given the way that the program works, at this point, we don't have any notification of that for certain. Uh, but, uh, you are allowed to resubmit an application. So this year we're seeking to put together what is essentially the same phase two application on this map. One update for you that is significant, uh, is the phase one portion was funded under the twenty twenty-three allocation. So, uh, that's, well, as you can see here on the map, it's about sixty-four hundred acres, mostly to the northwest and south of Trout Lake. So that's really exciting. We're super positive, uh, feeling good about that. We talked with the Trout Lake Community Council about it a couple of weeks ago. And that was well received. They also provided an updated letter of support for phase two, given the, uh, portion of the properties east and south of town. So, uh, I understand that there may be questions about the process or about this reapplication. And so we're here to answer those questions and, um, hopefully, uh, seek a, a new updated letter of support with slightly different acreage. Um, and then, and again, we'll provide a, a final map once, once this is complete.
Okay, I, I do have a question to start off on. So if you, uh, receive the funding to buy the development rights, how does that work with? Let's say twofold, uh, residential development. Um, and how does that work with management of the timber resource, uh, fire mitigation? You know, ground cover inside that timber source. How do, how do those two things work when it's under your development rights?
So it's not under our development rights? Uh, what the project does is it purchases the development rights that the landowner owns. So, uh, as a private landowner, they can, with their, uh, roughly fifty thousand acres here. They can, uh, subdivide, they can sell, they can develop, uh, as code allows. And what this program does is it purchases the value of those development rights. So they continue to own the property. They continue to manage it for forestry as they wish. Uh, but in the future, uh, the, the properties can't be subdivided and then sold for houses is, is what this program does.
Okay, so this isn't something that in fifty years, they have to give you the land. As long as they're keeping it in forest management, you own it forever. And so it's you guys that are dealing with the timber and forest management, fire management. And, okay, good enough. Questions?
Would there be any mitigation in the way you want to manage it for fire and vegetation things? As opposed to?
Are there conditions?
Yeah, would there be any change in what you desire to keep it in potentially?
I, I don't think so. I think it's, it's, uh, actually helpful to, uh, you know, if it, if it goes into the program, that's more, you know, sure you have bigger blocks of timberland. And that helps you with a lot of things that were, you know, especially related to fire mitigation and some of those things. If you, you know, start to break things up and have pieces that are, that are not, not the same use, then that, you know, creates more, more of a challenge along those lines.
This, um, this federal program, uh, is about, I think thirty-five years old and it's, it was originally created to keep forestry and forestry. So it, it really has forestry and staying in private ownership as the goal. And, and just taking out one path, which is conversion. So that's, that's really the essence of the program's goals.
Where did it rank last year in the, the list?
I don't know where it ranked last year. It's a really weird time. The, so two years ago, there was an influx of funding into the program. And the rules haven't been finalized for how all that money gets allocated. So what we're looking at with, uh, this phase two application that was submitted last year is moving money kind of down the list, but I don't know exactly what the ranking was. I can find that out for you.
Okay, uh, what was the cost for phase one?
Uh, phase one was eight point two five million dollars.
That was the award.
That was the award.
Hasn't transacted yet.
Uh, that, that, that doesn't speak to the value. That speaks to an estimate of what those could be worth. We try to estimate on the high side so that we're not short and then have to go back for future phases. Uh, so that's just what the application funding amount was for.
But what's the ask on phase two?
Fifteen million.
How do you guys come up with the weird map of landlocked sections often about? Is that just what that company currently has and you're accumulating what they currently have? Or are there sections that are like, no, you can't have this section, but you can have that section in there?
Uh, the map is based on the landowner's ownership and what they want to sell an easement on. Uh, so you know, some of these look weird and isolated. These are huge tracts. These are massive areas of land. The landowner has at their discretion what they're willing to, to sell on though.
So in the future, if the landowner puts these large tracts of property into the legacy program, does that mean eventually if you wanted to divest of some of those properties, they wouldn't be able to be broken down? They'd still stay in these huge tracts? Is that a caveat that's in there? So?
Yeah, so one of the things that the easement does is it prevents subdivision of tracts. So selling off multiple, uh, smaller ownerships, uh, it does allow for some subdivisions, uh, but it puts a cap on that.
Like how small are you chucking? Uh, under five hundred acres?
Oh, no, it's not the size of the subdivisions. It's the number of subdivisions.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you wanted to make, you know, a transaction where, you know, hey, five hundred acres or fifty acres or it's the number. So if, for some reason, you know, it's, it's thought at this point in time that, you know, it would stay as a whole, but
Right.
Going forward, if, you know, for example, you know, a thousand acres wanted to go even to the county for some reason. You could make that argument and make that transaction happen.
But would it still be under forest?
Under the easement.
Protection that we can't just go subdivided and throw houses on it.
Right, and then another forest interested person would have to purchase it.
Or purchase it with, with the, with the development and
Yes.
Right, so to keep it.
So typically the value of it would be reduced because now, uh, you, as a landowner, as a purchasing landowner, you couldn't sell development rights on it. So
Okay.
Uh, financial use would be continuing in timber. So you'd be buying at a timber value without a speculative addition on, uh, for residential.
Okay, and, and the, the, the goal there was to allow for, you know, you try to allow for some smaller parcel acquisition because you might have small forest land ownership who would benefit from that. But not too many partializations because then it breaks down the purpose of forestry.
Which leads into, I guess, you know, going ahead and discussing there, there are parcels that are owned by Twin Creeks that are not on the map. And so, you know, it's, you know, this is forever and long term. Some of those pieces, uh, you know, it's, it's hard to make that decision at, at any point in time, you know, to, to seal that fate forever. So, uh, you know, and, and some of it might be just that they don't make sense to be in the program. So.
But is, is some of those, because they're right on the river and development of residential might be a higher value down the road? I mean, because I'm not seeing a lot right on the river.
You know, there's
If you kept a block out, uh, potentially go a different avenue.
You know, there's, uh, in terms of White Salmon River frontage, um, you know, most of that is not, I don't think there's any of it that's owned by
There's this one little piece, but the family kept most of the river frontage property. It wasn't sold as part of the SDS sale.
But that, you know, if you have, for example, and then, and these exist, say a ten or a twenty acre parcel surrounded by developed properties. You know, that parcel, having it in an easement, uh, forever may not make sense. Um, you know, it might get, uh,
So I was looking at some of the landlocked or just random out on the road. I'm like, okay, but it, it just, it didn't make any sense to me to have these little, I mean, granted they're little here. They're probably a thousand acres or more.
A lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of people went into thinking these things through. So they're good questions that you're asking and I can assure you that they've been.
And do you target best property, best timber property? Do you, do you try to target it for long-term future?
For sure. That's one of the, the bigger, bigger pieces.
So that's probably why.
So if it's, um, if it's not good timber ground, you know, it may be, uh, up to an including alternative. It's, maybe it's owned by conservation group or some other alternative owner, just because it's not productive forest. So.
So even the ones that, um, and I don't know the specifics right now, but that might look like they're hanging out there. Some of that analysis was, is it surrounded by active forestry? Is our forest roads and access really the, because as you know, as things, as land uses change, it gets harder to do forest practices. So as we looked at all these together, we were looking at viable continued forest practices and that those surround, so it, it may be surrounded by forest land.
Yeah, one thing that this map doesn't show well is that, especially, um, kind of on the, the plateau area. You know, you see there's like whole sections or a single parcel. Those are also in forest use. So this doesn't show private, other private timber ownership. So they might not be as like isolated as they appear.
No, the main thing this shows is somebody had a really bad game of Tetris.
Yeah.
To get an end well for them.
Well, and that, um, speaks a little bit to, uh, you know, the, the purchase of these properties over the history of the SDS timeframe. I mean, it, they're in Clickatat County, there was like two hundred and fifty deeds in that, in that drawer. So this was purchased two hundred and fifty Tetris pieces at a time. So some of them were big Tetris pieces, some of them were very small.
I mean, other person. So, you know, I look at it as some of these that you're protecting, you're paying about a thousand dollars per acre. And this is, this is all public dollars, you know, it's all our money. And some of these areas, uh, that I'm looking at, absolutely, they have a, a potential for development. Some of these areas, they, you'll never, you'd never be able to get paid for the road to get into it. And so are we, are we truly choosing the areas that we, we want to protect from development that we think would be developed versus are we just paying for all the? And I look, you know, some of that in phase one, a little bit in phase two that, that I, you know, I'm a little concerned about, but I've seen development in weird places, um, in Idaho, Washington, Oregon. And I guess the next question kind of goes into, do we know is, uh, the people who purchased the other part of the property, who, you know, has a conservation mission? Are they applying for these funds? Have you contacted with them or they, they're competing?
That's the Loopan LLC Conservation Fund interest. No, they're not part of this forest legacy. Because, um, and, and we've shared with you and would be happy to, to do that, um, as we progress. They have long-term goals for, like Columbia Land Trust is buying some of them along the Clickatat River for, uh, oak. So it's a different, different future for those. For oak, uh, habitat protection, the pieces that are on the west side of the Clickatat River. And then, um, couple of them they're holding that we don't, we aren't involved with. Uh, we are in the process, we'll be buying, uh, a big piece up at Rattlesnake Creek again for, um, habitat. So the outcomes there are different and they're characteristically, what we're buying is not the greatest forestry. Although we will, as, as Columbia Land Trust acquires, will continue our practices, which are paying property taxes, allowing public access and harvesting for management goals that are just different from Green Diamond's interests in Twin Creeks.
I guess I just worry, you know, with, but their horizon of how long they want to hold it. There's a lot of lands along the White Salmon River that, uh, would be high candidates for conservation. At least getting the development rights off of them because they're much closer to the main roads.
Yeah.
And, and I guess, and I understand willing buyer, willing seller, and if they don't want to be a part of it, I completely understand. But, uh, I just want to make sure that, that we're looking at this holistically, geographically. So that we're buying the stuff that actually has the potential for development. We're not just paying Green Diamond for stuff that would never get developed. Because I, I see that as not a good use of public dollars.
Yeah. And uh it probably we're saying too that once the grants are awarded, they'll go through uh for the transaction. The Department of Natural Resources is actually the recipient. And then they go through um Yellow Book, what we call Yellow Book Appraisals. You guys know those. So they'll be, they'll, these are our best estimate of values kind of spread out over these acreages. But they'll go through an uh a a very deep appraisal process. Will help that comprehension.
Was the the Mount Adams Community Forest, uh, was that the same uh Lake Forest Legacy dollars that was used to acquire that?
No, but it's through the same Forest Service program, but it's a community forest specific grant. And so this this program does not allow uh uh private entities to purchase land or development rights. So this program goes through Washington Department of Natural Resources.
Nate, I wonder, uh, just, uh, do you mean the?
I mean, the one. The, yeah, the one right there where the.
Forest that was bought with Forest Legacy. You mean the the canyon up on the?
I mean, the one that that would twenty seventeen that we all served on that committee.
That was bought with Forest Legacy.
That was, okay.
Right. And Forest Legacy Funds do allow for, yeah, I I remember well. Um, they do allow for fee simple purchase. And in that case, and if you remember, we went through those meetings, it had to go into a public ownership. And so in the end, it was decided for the DNR Community Forest Trust category. That's right, but same dollars. Same program.
Same program. So that was kind of where I was I was wondering, you know, and and you guys are putting forth an application and and I'm looking at these and I'm like, well, some of this would be good. Is there a way that we can get some of this transferred in? And primarily that the um, I'm looking at more the the other side of the 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 other side, the Loopin side. Um, should we be talking to them about putting an application, maybe the county or the state picking up those, some of those parcels that we can then actively manage for forest? Forestry use and would that be a safer bed or looking at this? Because I look at a lot of these acreage and I'm like, there's, it would never be developed. Why? Why are we doing it?
Well, we we sure could sit down together and look at maps and talk about the county's interests and uh vis a vis the federal forest legacy.
But that land, that's a different landowner.
But I mean, you could look at it, that's right. But you could look at it from an academic standpoint of what does the county care about? And, you know, but yeah, you'd have to, of course, have landowner cooperation. But you could look at, you know.
Well, we we hope so. Very soon have a new project coordinator who have a a deep history in forestry. And so I will love to set up a meeting with you, Sherry and Nate um uh when they come on board.
What is that position?
It's a project coordinator position for natural resources, my own job.
Okay, no, we'd love that. I mean, I think with something like that, it would be just looking at the landscape and the suite of opportunities for you for natural resource protection. And that's what we're good at.
Any other, I mean, you guys are doing a great job. Um, you know, a lot of these properties, I'm looking at the wildland urban interface. And you're in essence protecting that interface from the the sprawl that could happen if the kind of timber company decided we're going to try to hire and better use it all and sell it out. And so um I think I I can get behind the direction. It's just some of them I'm like, uh, wouldn't be developed anyways. Why pay for something you're not going to develop?
You know, I I hear you saying that and I think it's my perspective that over time, many of those will be, and we just never know. And what I see is like the benefit of this program is we have the opportunity to get out ahead of it. Uh, because once uh once there's pressure to develop something, it's up and tucked away. Uh, we don't have these tools. So it there is a little bit of like being proactive and it's for sure, like some of these probably wouldn't be developed. But many of them would be. And, you know, I think at least I constantly feel surprised at where things pop.
I would say we have the same problem with farmland preservation trusts. Buying huge swaths of land that are nowhere even near a road that will never be developed and um, you know, we're paying, well, taxpayers are paying the million dollars, multi-million dollars to cover those, which is the same. Scenario. So, yeah, unfortunately, then you get into policy debate on whether that's the best use of taxpayer resources. Because like you, it makes sense to buy the ones that are in potentially developable areas and not the ones on the backside of some canyon that nobody will ever get a road to. Um, but um, yeah, no, that's neither here or there. That's that's a pay grade or two above me.
But if you think what's happened long-term, what we've even seen in our lifetime, you know, it's shocking and. It is shocking.
It's easier to live in random places now. A lot easier.
I really wish we would have made able to use some of these dollars to protect the Simcos as we're seeing it get chunked up right now. And that was always our fear.
You know, that's a great example. And I I agree. A good feeling to get out in front.
And and that's why, you know, I I think, you know, we need to be focusing on those areas where we know there's developments that's heading that way and somebody who's actively trying to do it. And then the question is.
Fire interface.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, I completely agree, Commissioner.
Um, so one other thing, um, this map needs to be updated. Our politics are printing the wrong map. Uh, this is outdated. These phases three and four, they're going to be um submitted under a single application this fall as well. There's, uh, I told you about, there's that extra money in that program. So they're they're doing an additional um acquisition in the the limit, the upper limit for applications is higher on that one. So in a month, we will reach back out and would ask for an additional letter of support to complete phases uh three and four in one final phase. Um, again, I'll send an updated map of what that looks like. Want to give a heads up on that?
Any other questions from the board? Now, any questions from us?
Could I get a shape file of this? I'd like to look at the parcels a little closer.
Yeah, it's well, I'll leave that to the landowner.
We can work on that.
I shouldn't have said yes. That's not.
I don't know how much worked out. I was kind of doing that. I was trying to look at parcel size. Okay.
Well, we we appreciate the time and being able to share our work. Uh, we at Columbia Land Trust, we we've liked to have had in the past, you know, at least annually to come and visit just to share without a purpose. And I think we'll look forward to doing that in the future. Um, we appreciate being citizens here and um, so we'll just keep our conversation open. And don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, do you have an updated business card?
I do.
He charges extra for those.
Not for me. Good to see you, Sherry. Thank you.
Yep. No, that was good. Um. Do we, um, does anybody want to further discuss this or just chew on it and further discuss it at a different time?
I'd like to see their updated map.
I'd like to see the updated map as well. Um, I know they're going to be talking with the Scaminia County Commissioners. And many county commissioners have some questions um about this program and process. Because um the fee simple changeover is something they're really interested in. And um and that would be um putting it into, so the the in essence, the DNR would own it and then manage it for the county. And then the county would switch encumbered properties with those properties that are useful so that they that the county can get good dollars off of that. And and we haven't some of the encumbered lands as well. And so I want to hear how that goes and.
So, follow up, should I? Are you Lisa? Lisa, nice to meet you. Thank you. Should I follow up with Lisa? Uh, we didn't put a fine point on whether the
On the letter.
Yeah, supportive of the letter.
Submit us a letter, submit us an updated map.
Okay.
We'll have discussions.
Okay, we'll do. Uh, the timeline for this one is it needs to be submitted by the first of September. So that's a week from Friday. Uh, so I'll be in touch with Lisa.
Thank you. Do you know when that meeting is, Jake?
I think they're heading to it right now.
Oh, that's a perfect time. Going backwards.
Clock on her wallet's one o'clock. So I didn't know if we had to go to Citizen.
Nothing works.
But I would be, you know, that's something I'd be be really interested in if, you know, if we, there's lands that that the county would be interested in um in the DNR acquiring that using Forest Legacy Dollars. And then we could hot swap that for encumbered ground.
What is encumbered?
So the encumbered ground is lands that you can't log for one reason or another. It could be due to spotted owl. It could be frog. It could be lots of different reasons um that DNR encumbers property.
Why would we want to own encumbered land?
No, what we would do is we we have land that's encumbered. So we would use the Forest Legacy Dollars to purchase land out of And then we would, then we would transfer the encumbered land to the DNR so that we could then manage or get, they would then manage the land that's productive timber ground for the county's benefit.
As long as it never gets traded.
Long as it never gets what?
Never gets traded. Fish wildlife or.
Anyways. Okay.
Good fun.
Mister Chairman, is everybody good with the consent?
Yep.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with thirteen items.
And I'll second.
Motion is second to approve consent agenda. Any discussion on the consent? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of consent agenda with thirteen items, say aye. Aye, most best.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve pay estimate number one for Sadist Pass Radio Site Tower Project. Uh, this is today wireless. Um, and the total bid amount was four hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-seven cents.
And I'll second.
Right, we have a motion as second to pay pay estimate number one, today wireless. Any discussion on that one? Hearing none, all those in favor of paying pay estimate number one today wireless, say aye. Aye, motion passes.
And Mister Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the county's payable warrants in the amount of four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, five hundred and one and forty-six cents and payroll benefit warrants in the amount of zero. Sorry, didn't look ahead. Date ending August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I will second that motion.
Hey, we have a motion as second, pay the bills, uh, or at least part of them. Uh, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of pay the bills, say aye. Motion passes. Uh, moving on, new business, unfinished business, or pending any other issues for the love of humanity. And it feels weird to be such a short day tomorrow and then coming back for a workshop a little bit tomorrow and a little bit of workshop the next day.
We did have a, do you want a update of anything?
What do you want to update?
A good update. I had a great airport board meeting um last week. And uh they're making good progress down there. Um, they're on the edge of their grants that they need to extend the runways and um they're moving forward with the new building that will house the Columbia Gorge College. Class for airplane maintenance. And um I happened to, that morning I got up and turned on the TV and I happened to catch a K O I N TV segment on it. Told all about the project and how wonderful it was in the gorge and what it'd be doing. And it was, it was a good TV segment. So what else did we do? The fuel station's been a really good success for them, the new fuel station. Uh, they're able to sell fuel now or more fuel. They put in new tanks and their their first round in the first month, they sold everything that they anticipated in two days. So that they have to up their ante now. And they're getting a lot of flights in. Their tally says that they've had thirteen thousand flights since January first. So they're they're busy down there. Um, people are asking because there's some bigger plans coming in. So they get people calling in saying, hey, what was that jet doing? Or who was that on that airplane? Yes, yeah.
Like we're going to tell you.
I thought I thought the new fuel farm hasn't been built yet. We just got the the grant for it.
You know, and I may be wrong at what that was applied for, Jake, what the extension was, but this was something that they did this year. Uh, I'm still on that learning curve and it expanded their ability for selling fuel. And they, this is the report I wrote down that they anticipated selling X per month, but they've already broken that. And they broke that in two days. Their anticipation for fuel sales this year is two hundred and forty-five thousand gallons. And they're gonna.
Yeah, because they're the the grant is to move the fuel island because currently that's underground in the center there. And they're going to build uh when they do the South Apron project, and they're going to build a new fuel island for the GA aircraft.
Are they going to build an explosion wall?
It's for the remote further.
They were doing good with DNR too because they couldn't keep up with the flights coming in over the fires because they were going into Oregon for fires out of there. They were going to our fires out of there. So DNR had their own fuel trucks. They'd be fueling one and it's, they wanted to get another one out. So they told our guys, hey, fueler, and they paid for fuel out of ours.
Most of the helicopter crews come in with their own big fuel trucks with the sky cranes and everything.
They're moving so fast and moving so many of them.
They use a lot of fuel.
So that helped us with fires for sure. And uh, I guess the Oregon National Guard, Air National Guard is very interested in that airline mechanic program. And they're um thinking about helping fund and chip in and it's a good program for them.
So I guess that still goes down, you know, we're looking at that carb carb loan in order to get that built and done. Which. It definitely opens up a lot of potential development for us.
It does, and it's a good program for jobs, you know, they, I guess, what's already existing, they're hiring them right out of school with great wages and picking them up right away. And it translates, that education translates, not in the the airline maintenance, but it also translates into hydro and wind power. You can use the same skills to apply for those jobs. And when you get the certificate, you keep the certificate at yours. You can go wherever you want.
Um, I guess I can give you a really exciting board, my food and shelter board. Grant money for the year delegated. Roughly a third of it to the food banks, a third of it to senior service meal programs and a third of it to backpacks for kids. Um, it was about twenty thousand and there apparently is another grant coming for twenty thousand that will probably get about the same allocation. Um, that was the fun and exciting part of that board for now until it meets again next month. Um, Wausack Steering Committee that we had last Thursday. Um, this is where we're going over all the different counties wants to put on their priority list. And we start working through in small groups, um, what we feel is a priority. And then we'll pick those priorities at the uh conference in November. A lot of the same issues that have been brought up in the past. Um, I will say the uh solar pilt bill that this county started um, that was in the legislature last year and and died a um very miserable death um is still dead. Um, apparently Cypress Creek, who was the one that reached out to Wausack to build that bill uh originally is still interested. But I believe I put a handout in your office, did I not? No? Well, no, I would have did it last week. We could have found it on your chair. Anything I put in your office, if not off, to find it predatory. Um, it pretty much covers what essentially Cypress Creek's ask is if you want green energy in Washington State, you have to charge us less taxes. Uh, because Oregon's cheaper and Idaho's cheaper. And so their argument is. Uh, because Oregon's cheaper and Idaho's cheaper. And so their argument is, under the existing um taxation rate. Say they would have to pay um nine hundred thousand a year using our method. Um, using the Pilt method, they can save that and only have to pay five hundred thousand a year, which is what they want to do. Because right now we all know that it's front loaded on the depreciation schedule. And they don't ever plan on owning a project long enough to get to the depreciated years. So they're trying to average in all the years so that they can build a project, run it for a year and sell it and not have to pay all that tax burden. Uh, but they're also not looking to just spread that taxation over the period of twenty years. They're looking to spread it over a period of twenty years and getting a fifty percent discount on it. Um, which um thankfully, um, that idea is currently dead. It's going to have to take uh much more um time and workload than the commissioners have delegated Wausack to spend um on that mentality of um corporate discounts. So how long that stays dead, we don't know, but um dead for now. Um, do you want, Wausack sent a packet that's literally this thick of the sixty plus things that different commissioners uh have sent. They wanted Wausack's final four to be. Um, do you want a copy of that for your own?
Okay. Please.
There's multiple emails because different people added on things after the fact. Um, so they sent emails with just four or five. Anyway, so then I have a Zoom. Um, something like this uh fourteenth of September. Where again, the small working group is going to be working on our thoughts to that packet. Um, and they, they broke the thirty-nine counties into like six different working groups. Um, to make it more manageable and then we'll be in Ellensburg the following weekend, the twenty-first. For trying to get that number. Um, a little more reasonable number before we go into the fall conference. Um, trying to think what else happened over the course of the week. That's probably about it for me. Yep.
Uh, Senior Services is also having a kind of, kind of a regional meeting towards the end of month. It was scheduled yesterday, but it had to be changed later in the month and it is their three-year plan coming up. What uh Aging and Disability Board is working on with them for the next three years, what the plan is for our senior services. So that'll be a good meeting.
Steph got anything for us? No. Yee-haw, twelve fifteen. We're going to set a record, or one fifteen. It's one fifteen. Where'd you get that clock? Will? Or it thinks it's daylight savings time and set itself back? It's right, so it can't be that. Interesting. I was wondering if it was just going to be stuck at one o'clock just to like Groundhog's Day. Yeah, it's just, that's the nightmare of having to go through that every half hour. Start over again. Any um, anybody have anything else for the good of the order until we meet again tomorrow?
Nothing that can't wait, I don't think.
I'd just add one more thing about the airport. I had one more note that we need to be thankful for Jeff Renard, the manager. He's doing really well. They went through an inspection from EPA and uh no red marks. And they said EPA told them that was wonderful, that it doesn't happen very often, but everything was great. Their paperwork's in order, business license, insurance, uh, they passed everything.
We haven't heard anything about the FAA litigator from the prosecutor. Have they given you any update?
That's what the airport wants it to. No update.
The last time they only before, long before I ever knew, so. Get my information from a different source.
Betty's waiting.
Okay. With that, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn until tomorrow.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion, we adjourn until Wednesday at nine AM.
I will second the motion.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion is second to adjourn until Wednesday at nine AM. Uh, of which we will be here in the commissioner's room. We will not be on Zoom. So if you want to show up, uh, you're more than welcome. Uh, any further discussion on the motion or hearing none, all those in favor of journey until tomorrow morning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.